Let's call this meeting order. This is our.
I don't know if we need to right now, she's not here, attorney.
This is a public hearing. This is for a public hearing agenda. Okay. Let's do a roll call first. Mr. President. Mr. Tindall.
Here.
Mr. Lucas. You know, Mr. Cox.
Present.
And chairs here. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a waste transfer station. And there's attorney back in?
No.
So we got to wait, we got to wait until she gets here.
Yeah, well, I'm saying she's not in.
Okay, hold on, I didn't know the attorney. We'll wait till the attorney gets back. We can't. We're not supposed to operate without her. We about to move on without you, we can't do that.
I did, but I didn't get attorney.
We started this office as our public hearing agenda. And this is a request for a conditional use permit for a waste transfer station. And I'd like to hear the support on, for this thing. Is anybody, Richard, you want to come up and tell us what, what this is all about?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we do this, should we bring up?
Let's let staff introduce.
Staff introduce what we got going on.
Okay.
Make sure everybody read it.
You want it?
All right. Basically, this is a bit of a recap from something that was brought up back in 2022. Initially, it had been requested to be a conditional use under 706.3 for recycling and waste reduction transfer operations. Initially, this was basically tabled by the commission. They have requested the folks from Ryland to contact the development authority and see if maybe they want to do something for a land swap. Well, a few years later down the road, we're here, talks didn't go through, so, or things fell through on that, so they decided to just stick with what they had. And per our county attorney, their instructions, we are bringing this back again as a fresh request before the commission. It was brought before the planning commission last month, and they agreed unanimously to approve. So we're bringing it back, your thoughts on this?
Okay.
Just to give you a little bit of detail.
Is the planning commission okay with it?
Yes, sir.
They fine with it?
Yes, sir.
And E P D is?
There is a permit, my understanding is, but it is dependent on the approval from the county commission.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any of y'all got anything for him? Yeah?
Well.
Initially, I will say that there were initial concerns back in 2022.
Right.
As the proximity to some of the food plants that were nearby, but a lot of that.
They got that worked out?
And they've got access to sewer out there, so any concerns about it getting over there, they've got sewer systems they would tap into there, so.
Okay.
And we do also have people from Ryland here answering any more technical questions if you have any.
Okay. Y'all have any questions for?
I got one. Mr. Burks, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, Dustin, I know the last time when this was brought up, it was some concerns about the proximity to Bailey Foods, I believe it was.
Yes.
And my understanding is that the management, I guess, at that facility have some concerns and pretty much not agreeable for this to be there because of the proximity, you know. So I don't know if anyone is here from that plant, or we got development authority to write to here, and I know he's involved somewhat, I guess, you know.
Mr. Burks. So I was gonna tell you that I've had conversations with Jason Rudenbauer, who's our development authority director, and Richard Lee with Ryland, just to make sure that those concerns that may come from Bailey are addressed. So I've asked the two gentlemen to get together with the plant manager at Bailey to have a conference, get together to make sure that whatever concerns they've got, you know, with cleanliness or what have you is taken care of, and have an agreement that if there's anything that comes up in the future, that they will work together to be good neighbors and satisfy and settle any problems amongst themselves rather than having to call outside intervention in.
Yeah.
So, and they've both, they've all agreed, or at least these two gentlemen have, and I'm sure the gentleman from Bailey will agree as well to have a conversation. So in that way, you know, I feel comfortable with moving forward with it as long as they have this conversation.
And I'm glad you brought it up, but that's one of the things I talked with Jason about, and also Mr. Lee, previously, I didn't know back then, that I would hope that he and, I don't even know who the gentleman is over Bailey Foods, but that they could kind of come to some kind of consensus as to how they could work this way or work out for both of them, you know. And so I'm good with that, as long as we do that before, or make sure that they're in agreement before we act on it.
Right. Okay.
Just to clarify, there's a map on the screen showing you the location and its proximity. So if you get that, it's up here, Bailey Foods over here, and this is the actual site. You got, name of the mill just popped in my head, mine ass up to the north of it, so.
Okay.
And I rolled back out again today, where I went far back and went out there, and basically it's roughly, what, seven, eight hundred feet from property line to property line, something like that?
If you're talking about from this corner here to this corner here, it's about 150, 200 foot. If you're going from this corner to the closest edge of the building over here, it's approximately 500, 550, give or take.
Okay, that's coming from the edge out there?
Yeah.
Okay, because I, basically came from like the front of the building to.
If you're talking about from building to building, that's. That's a meters, whoops.
Hey, Dustin, can I?
Yep.
Can I tell you something?
Sure.
So the proposed site would be behind that existing building over in the corner.
Right there.
About 1150, that's over 1,000 feet, from their building to our proposed site.
Yeah. About 1,000 foot.
And Mr. Lee, if you could kind of refresh my memory on it, as far as this is gonna be a transfer station, right?
Yes.
And is there some certain thing you all have to comply with as far as like washing down all this stuff every day or something you would tell them about?
Yes, there are. It's a, for E P D permit by rule, there are seven conditions have to be met in order for us to be compliant. And that's, we've actually got a handout in PowerPoint to give you if y'all want to see it. But it has sort of seven conditions. One of them that the waste has to be cleaned daily, be kept inside a building, there are several conditions have to be met.
Okay.
And so I just want to make sure I'm clear, John, so what you're saying is that you talk, him and Jason and these gentlemen, they're gonna get together?
Right.
And make sure everything, by the same page, and then after one, we'll act on it, you know, but once they make sure they got everything straightened out.
Not me personally, I'm satisfied with moving forward with it as it is.
Right.
And in, you know, taking the word of two men that I know and know well, that they're gonna have this conversation. One of the things to consider is the fact that there's 1,000 feet between their location and the food location. If you move up the road a little ways, there's already an existing transfer station that's almost about 750 feet from the sheriff's department where the jail is. I don't know if anybody's heard any kind of concerns about that, about extra rats and other vermin around the sheriff's department, or the fire department, or any of those places. And so, you know, there's gonna be, I mean, and there's food sources around those two buildings. And so I feel like if that's in a location, and the odor has not been an issue, things like that, and so, and this is kind of stuff I'm around a good bit with these transfer stations, I've been around with most of my career, and landfills and such as that, so I'm well aware of the conditions that they have to comply with.
See, that transfer station, been there 28 years since 97, and I, they said they had never had issues, no odor issues, pest, rodents, or anything. I've got the seven conditions have to be met, I can give you a copy of it, but it's just a standard. About rodents and about no sewage solids, no dust or odors, no runoff, no hazardous waste, and no liquid waste. It's gotta be cleaned daily, kept inside the building.
Can I get one of your handups?
Yes. We got kind of two of them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I only brought one copy of this, if we can make a copy.
We can make some copies also, if y'all like.
The conditions that have to be met are those seven right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, have you talked with the gentleman at Bailey Foods recently?
Not, not, it's about three years ago, I did it, I was just a different manager now, but I, I would, you can ask Mr. Rudenbauer, but I think I understood that if we could get together and just make sure that we address this, you know, if the sheriff's department's only 750 feet away, and this is over 1,000, they've never had issues there. Football field closer, they are than we are to Bailey. So they've never had a resident issue or a hose issue there.
Okay.
How many employees y'all work now?
In Waycross, we got about 26.
26. Will that increase any when you do this?
It will, it'll increase, what, probably three there.
Three there, and we're also.
We just picked up, ran it down.
Higher position, four.
No, we probably.
So y'all actually have concrete and all out in front of the thing like that?
If you look at that picture, if you just pull it up, what you'll see from the road will be the side of the building, because this is the face of the.
The side of the property, so you'll see that actually just a metal building from the road, and a privacy fence, you will not see waste from the road. If you look at that picture on the back, and so it'll be cleaned daily, it can't sit in a transfer station more than 24 hours, it has to be continuously, as far as we watch, they have to connect the silver lines. So, so I know that you have, based on your seven conditions, no hazardous waste, and certain things, liquid waste, stuff like that, but you're gonna be receiving roll-off containers too, right?
Right.
As far as like construction debris, do y'all have, what kind of contingencies do you have set up for somebody that's gonna drop something in the dumpster that they're not supposed to drop in the dumpster? What kind, how do y'all handle those kind of things? The reason I'm asking, because I know locally there was a situation with some lithium metal that caught on fire at a transfer station, it took about eight hours to put it out, and probably about $100, $150,000 for cleanup, and about a year and a half of almost consistent downtime. So we don't want that for you guys, so what kind of process do you have in place for those kind of situations?
We are very clear, at least when we set up contracts with customers about what they can and can't put, we do try to educate our driver and our loader operators on what to look for. When you do cleanup, what we have to do is we have to contract, if there's ever a situation, clean up, what do they, you know, E P D approved contractor, and that's, if there was ever a situation where there was anything like that, we would immediately call a certified contractor. But we do train our employees, that, you know, they're supposed to call us, if they think they've got there, it's not supposed to be.
Right.
And we're very clear when we go with a customer, you know, and mostly hazardous waste and things like that, you know, the customers, the dust of customers have that as a special waste, and we don't actually deal with those wastes, they have special haulers that do that.
Right.
And the fire department's too busy from that side.
Right.
They're trying to call that more specifically.
Yep.
There's a lithium battery concern nowadays, you know, because it's in toys and cell phones and computers, and, you know, and so, you know, there is, you know, we'll have some fire suppression system in the building, fire hoses in the building, so that if we were to have a fire, that we, with the fire department being as well. Yeah, we know you don't take a water hose, it's pretty efficient.
No. Smother it, put dirt on it, that's the fastest way.
So y'all have to put scales and all in?
That's right. So we just, we revamped that whole site.
Yeah.
We push it back and we redesigned the shop, put an office in front, more conducive to God love the customer. You see how we get it from there? Spend a lot of money on to get it back. It's a little benefit for community and competition, you know, with waste disposal fees and things like that, a little competition will really help with rates and things like that as well. So we'll be, have some Saturday operations, so folks will have a place to come on Saturdays.
That'd be good.
Dispose the trash.
That's good.
We anticipate a lower, a low minimum, you know, folks coming in maybe a $15 or $20 minimum, so they don't have a big bill, they're just bringing up one sofa out there, you know, they don't have a big bill. So it'll be real, we feel really real cohesive and friendly. We also want to do some recycling, we have a recycling drop point there, so you have folks that are in the community, there's about a whole lot of them, there are some that are passionate about recycling, will have an outlet, they can come out there and drop some recycling, and we'll ship it off there so often in the recycling.
That's gonna be a good point. Exactly. Okay.
That Saturday, open up on Saturday, it'd be a big deal if you brought stuff out of wood, you ride out in wood, but you'll see.
May help keep the county cleaner.
Yeah, we need to let everybody know that too, that they can dump out there.
A working man, they don't have an option.
They can bring it out there.
During the week.
Yeah.
To dump.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so, all right, so y'all, Jason, you good with everything?
Any more questions? Okay, y'all got any?
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, now, we have anybody that opposes this thing? Do we have anybody that opposes this transfer? If not, let's carry it over to the meeting. Do we have to close this here before we open the other one, or can we continue?
I think we can continue on, we're, is one public hearing, was it advertised as two separate ones?
Okay. All right, we're gonna go on to the next, and Johnson, you got it?
Yes, sir.
On the rezoning.
Let me switch the map. So this is a request from Jose Gomez for rezoning of 3873 Scapa Road, that's parcel number 034B01050C, from A Agriculture Forestry and ASDD, which is Ag Forestry Special Development District, to LI Limited Industrial District and LI SDD Limited Industrial Special Development The location of this, zoom over here on this map for you, is just south of, it's about 2,000, south of the intersection of Scapa and Amma Highway and the business US1. It's, and just before you get to Lovett Road, so, just to give you an idea of where it's located, to the north of it, you've got farmland, plant pines, Pebble Hill RV Resort, mixture of A SDD, A1, CDD, and since the, this was originally put out, we've got new countywide zoning, so that adds in the C2 up there as well. To the south of it, again, residences, farmland, plant pines, A, ASDD, A1, CDD, a little bit further down, you got CDD down there. Ooh, I think this happened to the. There we go. So yeah, to the south of it though, you've got more agriculture residences, similar type of thing to the east and west of it, you've got mostly residential and agriculture uses out there, A1, some C in conservation, just a mixture of that same kind of stuff out there. As far as the future land use, our character area map from the Waycross Square County Comp Plan shows that designated as agriculture or civil culture, so Ag and forestry related. This is actually one of the older zoned areas in the county, back, let's see, back in 1978, it was zoned to A1, and it was zoned for that particular section as A agriculture back in 2003, and in 2005, they added the SDD overlay along the edge of Scapa Road. So the reason that they're wanting to do this is to permit the manufacture of utility trailers on the site. Currently, their business license only allows them to sell as a dealership for these trailers, utility trailers. As far as the public services, fire and EMS, sheriffs, that's all out there at the industrial For the most part, this is a fairly flat piece of property, you have about two to three degrees slope towards the western part of it, towards a creek that runs at the back of the property. And as far as development potential for it, it could be used for different agriculture and residential purposes if they wanted to. As far as the adopted rezoning standards for the property, would it be a, hey, would this be a permitted use that is suitable in view of the use and development of the adjacent nearby properties? No, this property is adjacent to residences and farm properties. The proposed amendment would adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties? Yes. Manufacturing chemicals adverse effects to residences adjacent to the property via increased noise and pollution. The property to be affected by the proposed amendment would be, has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned? Yes. Could be developed for agriculture and residential uses. The proposed amendment would result in a use which would cause, which would cause an excessive or burdensome use to streets, existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities or schools. This, for some reason, it's not on here, but it was no, that this property, it's on major highway, so traffic wouldn't be too much of an issue, although the driveway may require some modifications for commercial use, including a decal lane. The proposed amendment is in conformity with policy and intent of the land use plan. Put that as no, but it's because the character area has it listed as agriculture and civil culture, so it's usually more for your Ag, forestry, natural resources type of stuff, so it's, and trailer manufacturing will be considered an industrial activity. As far as other existing or changing conditions affecting it beyond what's there, no, beyond what's already been discussed there. Just to give you a little bit of background on the issue, this was initially brought up because of, we had some complaints for code enforcement office, and they had responded to these, and we found out that utility trailer manufacturing was going on on the site, a stop work order had been put in place, and they have requested the, this rezon to allow them to restart their production over there. So. If you have any questions?
Y'all got any?
How many residential houses is out there, do you know right off?
Not right off the map, but I can take a quick look.
Is it? Is it close to that trailer?
I think you got one, two, three, four, five, six, so about six there, seven, eight. So yeah, about, about eight in that one little pocket right there, nine if you count this one down by Lovett.
I thought it's from that campsite, it's, it's a little ways from that event.
So this is the property right here, and this is the RV place.
The RV, okay.
Yeah, Pebble Hill RV Park.
Y'all have anything on it?
Well. Oh, and one other thing, the planning commission, they voted regarding this at last month's meeting, and they voted to deny the request, so.
Yeah, voted to deny.
Yes, sir, they voted to deny it.
Yeah. Dustin, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
Go ahead. You know, when you, I guess, when you're going through the, the different things as to why the rezoning request was being denied, and under E it says, basically talking about, I guess, James, the physician at the time, that it started off kind of like a hobby?
That is my understanding, but initially it was sort of a hobby type situation.
Okay, and then the next thing is that it said that Mr. Gomez noted he had gone through, that he had gone through the process and felt the plant staff had not properly guided him through the process, so he was granted a license, I guess, to sell the utility trailers, but not manufacturing?
Business license, I did bring a copy of those, on all of the licenses, it just refers to a dealership, not actually manufacturing the trailers.
Just dealership?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He could still sell them there, but.
Oh, he just can't manufacture them on that particular site?
I'd like to review that, so.
Okay, thank you.
So as it stands right now, it's not zoned where he can even manufacture them, he can sell them there?
Yes, and that was allowed because a lot of utility trailers get used for agricultural reasons, so for a fit with the selling them, that would be okay, but.
But not?
But not manufacturing, yes.
And did he, I guess he understood that whenever he got the license?
I can't speak for what happened at that time, but from the conversations I've had with our planning staff, these documents were all filled out by the applicant, that they had no, that they did not fill any of that out for them.
How long they been doing this? How long have they been?
Roughly about two years, I believe.
So, I guess, what, I guess what brought it on, I mean, if they've been going for two years?
Well, I mean, we had complaints regarding the property, so code enforcement responded to those complaints, and that's how this had come about.
Other words, did they start selling them and then stopped manufacturing them after they were selling some for a while?
That's my understanding, but I can't say that is anything, like any date that they actually started.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because.
But at some point between then and now, they started manufacturing them. When it was, I couldn't tell you that.
And that's, that's why I asked the question, were they aware whenever they got the license that they were there for just a dealership, just to sell them and not manufacture?
Yeah.
And if they were doing it for two years, and I'm wondering how did they get, do it for that long without some red flags going up somewhere, you know?
Unfortunately, that's not something I could really answer on that as to why they have written something different on their application. Those were, as I said, those were filled out by the applicant, and our office did not fill that out for them, so.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any more questions, Mr. Burks? Mr. John, you got anything?
Just looking over this paperwork we got here. As far as what I'm looking at, whenever the business license for River County was applied for, it just says dealership. And then also, the application for the LLC was for merchant wholesalers for durable goods, such as trailers and such, so it appears that their LLC was put forward to do sales, and the business license was to do sales as well.
So, what are they requesting right now to try to get the property rezoned?
They are requesting a rezon so that they can start manufacturing again on the site.
And currently, I guess, the office is not zoning that right now?
Currently, they have moved to a different location, uh, so they can continue at least their activities. The industrial park is my understanding.
Okay. Any more? Anybody else? All right, do we have anybody that opposes this thing? Some of y'all, one, maybe y'all come up and talk, one of, one of you come. How many, how many are there?
My name is Bonnie Crosby, I live right next door to this business, and, um...
Ms. Crosby, can you state your physical address for the record?
It is three eight seven seven Scapa Road. Okay, so, I just wrote down what, I wasn't sure how this would go, so I wrote down stuff so I wouldn't forget, so is that okay if I read off here?
Sure.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
I'd like to start by saying, we do not personally know Mr. Gomez, so this has nothing to do with his character or his personality. For the past eight to twelve months, Weare Cargo Trailers has flourished at the expense of our family's health and safety. What may have started as a backyard hobby or business quickly outgrew this property. And as a result, we have basically been held hostage in our own home, and our animals have had absolutely no relief. This business operates all hours of the day into the night, six to seven days a week. This is our home, a place that we should be able to reset and relax, but we are unable to do that. Weare Cargo Trailer employees and owner have no respect or consideration for anyone else around them. We have endured many, many sleepless hours, harassment, property damage, health concerns, and the list goes on and on. Examples include, but are not limited to, there's paint soaking into the ground. That could get into our water system, we do have a well on our property. Toxic paint fumes from open air painting. Burning hazardous material in a hole that they have dug out on their property. Trash everywhere on our property. Overspray on our, on our vehicles, on our personal property, on our home. Noise, and worst of all, they've been harassing, his employees have been harassing me and my child. My child cannot even go outside to feed our animals because they are constantly whistling at my fourteen-year-old daughter. We are asking that you do not rezon this area, because this is where our home, our refuge, our safe place for the past fifteen years has been. Mr. Gomez does not live at that residence. He instead rents both of those homes out. He is able to escape, therefore, the air, water, and land pollution that this business is causing is of no concern to him or his family. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, somebody else come up?
My name is Ricky Crosby, I live at thirty-eight seventy-seven Scapa Road. As you heard what my wife said, we have basically been hostage in our own home. We cannot enjoy each other's company as far as on the porch because of the noise. Couldn't cook a hamburger on the grill because of the paint fumes. And, and what it carries, the mist that's got on the cars would get on your food the same way. I have here plenty of evidence, I have from the sheriff's office, where the harassment charge. I have where my beagles have been damaged. I have pictures to show you, um, damage not only to our beagles, but to our property. There's eleven acres next door, I have a little over three, just a tad. And to come four feet on my property twice and cause ruts with a tractor, I don't see how you can do that, you got eleven acres. From my place to where this business is, to where they paint equipment, is thirty-nine feet. My daughter has asthma, I could even open the windows if I wanted to. Over a period of time, this, this gentleman, whoever he is working out there painting, is in a suit and a respirator. I'm thirty-nine feet, what you think that'd do if I let my children play in the backyard, breathing that in for a period of time? It's got to be toxic to wear a suit for that reason and a respirator for a reason. So I take this very seriously, because I've lived out there for fifteen years with no problems. My neighbor's sixty-two years, and they own several hundred acres out there, and they've had problems with noise. Uh, not as much as us who are right next to it. I have physical trash, pictures of trash, and this is just some of it, I have bags of trash at the house. If my animals consume this trash, the horse, a pig we have, or any other ones, the dog even, it'll kill them. If it gets in their stomach, it could kill them. And not only that, there's been complete disregard, like I said, for our property and the animals. Burning just across from my horse pen. Our horses, the last thing my wife has from her mother who passed away, last living animal we have. It has a lot of sentimental value. And to disregard, it has to sit there with the smoke, with God knows what's burning in it. To be honest, we get pallets and wood is saturated in paint. You know, you're not supposed to burn wood. But, um, I also have from the, which is public information from the EPD, which is still under investigation. That's public information, anybody can look it up. But I have proof of everything here, if anybody wants to see it, I'll pass it through. Anybody on the board, if y'all like to look at it?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rick. Anybody else? You got anybody else? Are y'all, how many of y'all are they that's opposing? Four, five, are five of y'all? Okay.
Can I ask something else?
Okay.
Yo, earlier you was asking about the neighbors, there's four of us. Steven, Dick, Ben, myself, Mr. Gomez, and Robbie Hiller, they're right in that area. Three of us have had a problem out of the four, because they were. And Steven's having surgery day, he wasn't able to make it. Robbie's work schedule wasn't allowed him, he's had trash in his pond. Same trash I have coincidentally, plastic. As far as the business started, it, it was just a couple of trailers, I'd guess, four or so a week. And the next thing you know, it was, he, he actually stated in the last meeting, it was eight to ten a day. Constantly painting, I mean, it might go on for eight hours, six hours a day painting equipment, because it's big trailers. Some of them, it's not just small utility trailers, it's equipment trailers. And right out in the yard. You know, I've went through a lot as far as my wife has too. And I've had to restrain myself a lot and go through the proper channels that I've told you and I know to do, and I don't know everything's supposed to do, to be honest with you. So, um, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We probably have ordinance we shouldn't be spraying in, anyway, that's.
Sir?
You shouldn't be spraying trailers?
Well, there's, there's ordinance, there's, there's EPD ordinances that govern spraying chemicals outside and into the dirt, and our ordinance don't necessarily, um, address that outright, but then, you know, your, um, some of your building regulations would require like paint rooms and ventilations and vents and so forth. But your emissions from EPD would require you to trap that stuff, so.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure in addition to those, you know, that had the opportunity to speak against, we want to make sure that anybody would have the opportunity to speak in favor of the request also.
Okay. Have we got anybody that support this thing? In favor of it? You want to come up?
My name is Jose Gomez, and I open Weare Cargo Trailers. Since the beginning, I start adding.
Mr. Gomez, state your name, or state your address for the record, please.
Thirty-eight seventy-three Scapa Road. Wherever my business is. When we apply for my permits, we do everything right since we started. I think they got mixed up with my two businesses, I got two licenses right there. One for dealer and one for manufacturing. I got the proofs here. I apply for my taxes, and we apply for manufacturing. I bring the same paperwork here to get my permits. They gave me my permits. I was thinking I'd do everything legal since the beginning. Okay? So maybe they mix it up. Or they put a different name on my licenses, I don't know how they come up with that. Do you want to see?
Mr. Gomez, if you'll bring it to the county manager here, we'll.
Bring it to the manager there, it would, y'all give him a permit to do that?
I thought the permit was for, uh, equipment sales and, uh, park sales.
I got one for sales, JL Cargo Sales. And I got another one for, uh, Weare Cargo Trailers. When I bring this paper states manufacturing, when y'all give me the permit, licenses, you put utility trailers in parks.
Well, that's what you applied for, was the utility trailers and parks?
No, uh, I bring the paperwork states they are manufacturing on my tax separate. Okay? So whenever they write the figure out, the one name they will put my license, they have a bunch of them on the computer, and they cannot find the right name for my business. That's why you tell them.
Yeah, I haven't seen this, but I don't see the business license when I was over it. I don't see necessarily all the paperwork as well.
That's a new permit I give for, uh...
Is this for the other address?
Yes. And I got the one for JL Cargo Sales, so it's a two different licenses.
These are for the other address?
For the other address? Not for the address you're at now? So, um, that's, where are you, where are you located now?
Twenty-two, perhaps, here in the future, I'll pull it back.
That's, so, yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, if we did, or if the office did inadvertently, um, issue a license in error in violation of the zoning, and I think law's clear that, that is, um, that, you know, we still have to go back and, and, um, enforce what the zoning ordinance is, uh, people make mistakes, so you can have those, those actual, um, errors, you know? I wish that it would, if we did issue it in error, I wish it had been caught earlier. Um, however, you know, it's been, uh, a couple of years, but, you know, from what I remember and speaking to Jamie, uh, one of the code, uh, admin personnel in the office, is that what he applied for on his, on his paperwork was for park sales and trailer sales. It wasn't manufacturing. Now, I don't see the taxes in, or the tax stuff that they got there, but, um, that's what he applied for, from my understanding. And we allowed that as because it's zoned agriculture, but we wouldn't allow the, um, or should not have allowed the, the, uh, the, um, manufacturing, because that's industrial.
Yeah, I, I don't see how you could have issued a license without it being in some kind of building or something if you was going to manufacture trailers?
But I think the license was for selling, and, uh, seller trailers and parks, it wasn't for manufacturing. I think both of his old licenses say for, uh, selling, um, seller trailers and seller parks. They don't sell for, the, the new one, where is that now, Industrial Park, says for manufacturing.
Does one of them say manufacturing?
For where he's at now in Industrial Park.
Oh, and the one now, the one now says.
So, so whenever he initially got the license, that's why I asked the question, was it for dealership, or was it for the manufacturing, or was it for both, what was it?
When he got the license from us, it was for dealer and seller parks.
But what is that?
That's not a license, that's something you apply for the state for a sales tax.
Yeah, that's the sales tax of use certificate.
They may not have had that when they came in for our office.
We, we. Just to clarify, that's a copy of the documents we had received there, so.
Oh, y'all received this too?
No, that's the documents that we received right there in Commissioner Ten.
And that's already in here.
Yeah.
But that's not the license from the county?
No, that's the sales tax of use form from the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
There's another one similar to it here, but it's talking about wholesaling trailers. Just, just like that one, except it has a different.
It is.
NAIC code.
That paperwork should have came directly out of his file.
Okay.
So. What you're saying is that they weren't ever issued a license for manufacturing?
No, sir. Until he moved to the industrial park location, it was.
I'm talking on Scapa Road right now?
There was no, no, no license issued for, uh, manufacturing.
On the Scapa Road, they would.
On the Scapa Road, correct.
No, there wasn't any?
Not for Scapa. Then it was moved, uh, that was added.
Okay. So, what we're asking for is for this property to be rezoned so they can manufacture.
That's what the applicant is asking for, yes, sir.
That's what we're here for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to get that right, so.
However, I will tell, tell you this, that even if it's rezoned, and he creates a nuisance to his neighbors, he'd still be charged to go to County Commission or County magistrate for a nuisance violation, for the odor and the smell,
Yeah.
um, burnt, illegal burning and so forth, so.
Well, and that's, that's what I was going to make a point to, is that
Yeah.
um, had, had, had those issues not been an issue, the, the odor, the overspray, the harassment, the trash, we probably wouldn't even be here.
Right.
You know, unless somebody reported, hey, he's manufacturing on this site, he doesn't really have the right, whatever. If, if there hadn't been overspray on these, these people's homes, or the harassment, or the trash all over the yard in the pond, things like that, it's, it's likely that nobody would have ever said anything if they'd have, you know, there's, there's that good neighbor policy kind of thing.
Right.
You know, um, and so, unless the code people was just riding around and said, hey, he can't do that here, there probably wouldn't have ever been anything said.
Yeah, and we, we, we actually, uh, the code department actually, um, responds to complaints. They don't go, we don't, they don't have enough staff to go look for
Right.
issues, they respond to complaints. And like I said in the planning commission, I went down there for this one, it's unfortunate, Mr. Gomez is basically a victim of his success with his trailers. Uh, you know, he was peeling with trailers, making a couple, wasn't an issue. Now, he's gotten so busy that he's just outgrown where he's at. Um, even if it was allowed, he's, he's pretty much outgrown from where he's at from the, uh, the, uh, paint and stuff. From his location, how close he is.
All right. That's all? That all y'all got?
I got a question.
You got a question?
Yeah, do you have a paint booth that you paint in, or you just paint out, or?
Well, uh, the, the first visit, the department codes made to us, they recommend me put a fence between me and my neighbors, and I'm open to do that. And then the second visit, they come with EPA, and they recommend me put a enclosure room. I already got my enclosure room closed with ventilation and everything. So it's ready set up, used for whenever I give the parents maybe start working with it. So it's ready set up, used for whenever, uh, I get a person, maybe start working with it. So I'm open to do anything the county asks me to do. So, uh, I like to be on my place. I own almost twelve acres right there. The three properties that he pointed, it belongs to me. The house and the double Y is mine. I got the other neighbor, four acres apart from my property. So about what a man says about arrangement or, or whatever, he never come tell me anything. If he got conversation with me, I'll fight whoever to that. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I, we like to help the county. We support education. We give trailer away to high school for support them, and the money we use, we use for, uh, scholarships. We support education. We got education. If a man come talking with me, we address it right. We should not be here. If they come talking to me.
So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
We understand. But you can't manufacture places where you're not supposed to, uh, I mean, it's what we get.
Yeah, did I understand you say that you have gotten a booth and got ventilation in it and on, on your property?
Yes.
So, other word, if you just paint, when you're doing the paint, because I've seen, that's a big issue about the paint. So if you wouldn't know you painted, you had the ventilation and all that, and then tried to address these other issues that, you know, as a lady, you know, about the harassment, the, uh, trash, and I think they said, but maybe construction. So you're saying you wouldn't have tried to, you're willing to comply with everything that the code department tells you?
Girl, I don't know anything, but could I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
State your name and record for the, a, a name and address for record, please.
Leon Spidey. I've been dealing with this land for fifteen years.
What's your address?
And he's.
What's your address?
Five thirty-nine Redland Church Road, Pearson, Georgia.
Thank you.
I've been dealing with him fifteen years, and he's proven to me that he's a, he's a good man, he's hard worker, and he don't want to upset these people. He thought he was doing it right. He got his license, and he's got that paper that says industrial. Whatever. I mean, manufacturing, he just didn't know if he was doing wrong. He thought he was doing it right, and so we don't, we don't want you guys to do anything that's not right. If it's right, so be it. But since he, he wanted to do it, and in two years, now he's been working out there two years, is that right, okay? He spent over a million dollars. He spent everything he worked for for several years trying to start a business, and he just wanted to have a successful business. He didn't know he was doing it wrong. If he had known, I hope the man wasn't a today, now, if he had known that he was doing it wrong, he would have done it. And he still wants to do it right. And, and he, he don't want you guys to do anything that's not right. But if he was being helped to him, and if it ain't right, don't do it. But if you could just, just give him, or if you don't try to rezonate, just give him a couple of months, long, to work out there. Because you worked there two years, and I don't think it might be big to say, put up with a couple more months. And then if it don't get rezoned, then he just have to leave. In other words, I, I'm speaking for myself, but for him also. He, he wants it, he wants what's right. And if he can't work out there, so be it. But if he could just continue on a couple of months, he'd pay five thousand dollars off that building, he didn't get it. And he's, he's, it's putting him in a bad situation. He spent all the money on materials, he had to run, run the building, move his stuff, and it's just putting him in a bad situation. So, we need us to figure out, do it wrong, just do it right. And so if he can't manufacture out there, so be it. But if it couldn't be rezoned, and he can manufacture out there, I can assure you, if any neighbor comes to him and told him that there was something bothering him, he'd change it. That's best not to do.
Well, we got to look out for these people that live by him. We, 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 we got to make sure that we're not going before, that's our biggest concern.
He, he wants, he wants you to. He don't want, he don't want to make some people, that's all it is in him. And if then we're all enough supposed to these ventures and years that he's put his energy in, his efforts and his dollars, but they probably trying to help and keep their livelihood, but they don't know what they're supposed to.
I got a question.
So whatever.
Okay, got a question.
How, how many employees do you work?
Well, uh, we have, uh, fourteen employees.
Fourteen?
Yes. So, we try to help, uh, young guys from college. We provide job for them where they can go back and forth to college, you know, uh...
If this don't go through, what, what's your plans? Try to find somewhere else, or?
Well, uh, it looks like if this is not going through, I probably hope somewhere else where they are loving work. I mean, I put World Carros with my company for one reason, because I want to be on workers.
Yeah.
Other one, I moved to Pearson, another one moved to Bacon or, uh, Hysipus. I use World Carros for one reason, because I do that at home.
Yeah.
And I pay my property over there, and I was thinking I've been doing everything right, because we apply for everything. So, I, I mean, we don't do nothing from behind the bush. I mean, we apply for everything, and then we start a business.
Anybody else?
Well, I would have to say, Mr. Chairman, that, and like I said, I know it's a concern for the people that's out there, but the issue about the painting, I think I'm going back to that, the overspray and all that. You say you've got a building, you got ventilation system, and all this and that.
Yes, sir. We got brand new, we're in enclosed with ventilation. We going to use the filters approved for EPA for no doubt. So, uh, plus the paint we use is cured in fifty minutes. By the time, let's say, go to the ground, it's very cured. I mean, that is not really bad for the whole system. Plus, we use some, uh, water proof, water base glue. So pretty much, it's not like we make a big, uh, spraying. I mean, we, we only paint the frame from the bottom, that's it.
James, does the EPA have any kind of regulations on him having to have a paint booth and all that before?
Yes, sir. They, they have been called, and they're under investigation now for, um, by EPD, for the, the paint being sprayed directly into the ground, or paint on the trailers and then, um, and then, you know, overspray or whatever going into the ground.
Look to me like, he should be inspected before he gets started to make sure that he's doing what he's supposed to do, though, before he.
Yeah.
Before he gets that, and I don't know if EPA did that, or?
So back when he first applied, we had no inspection process for businesses. Um, but if you recall, um, since then, we have, um, have adopted the, uh, rules that require any new business, before they start up and get a business license, they have to have an inspection done now. So, um, but we grandfathered all the, all the older businesses.
Because we have rezoned the whole county that one.
You, you have adopted countywide zoning, yes, sir.
We adopted a, a ordinance for the whole county.
Yes, sir. But before then, we actually, uh, back, um, I don't know, it's been a year, maybe a year and a half ago, um, we was having issues with, um, or not issues, it was concerns, uh, with the business. So the County Commission, uh, adopted a, um, ordinance or rule to require all new businesses to get a, uh, inspection on their building before they're actually issued a license. So.
Yo, you, you want to come up and say something, John?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to speak to the, uh, question regarding the EPD. So when they did come out, they, you know, I, actually, they came out upon my request to go out and look at the property. And regarding the paint, they did, I can't remember how they classify it, but it is toxic. Um, it does, it's a type of paint where the, um, the odor of the paint does travel quite a distance. Um, the overspray, um, can travel some distance, but not as bad as the smell. They are required by the EPD to file, um, uh, an environmental, for, for an environmental permit.
Yeah.
And at that time, just a, a couple of weeks ago, when I last spoke with them, um, he, he turned, Mr. Gomez turned in what I was told was a blank form, and one of the, uh, EPD specialists was to contact him or be in contact with him to help fill out that form for that permit. So to my knowledge, I don't know if that's been done since then, but that's another requirement that he has to fulfill.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Maria Macavies. Um, I have helped, I'm trying to help Mr. Gomez with the application. Um, we, uh, we sent me in the application, and we're in the process of sending them the information that they're required. There was some information in there that we weren't familiar with, so, um, um, we were working with somebody. Um, they sent us to, uh, things with the Small Business Administration or something like that, for them to help us with that. And then after that, they will determine if he requires, if he even requires a permit, um, uh, if, if a permit is required for him to be out there.
Okay. Maria, what was your address?
Okay, my address is fifty-five fifty-five Walkerville Road in Patterson.
James, is there any kind of help, if, if we deny this, are there any help that he can get anywhere to try to find him a building that he can afford? I, I hate to walk a man out on a bridge and cut it off.
Yeah.
Which I know is a problem, you know, where he's at.
Right.
But he works fourteen employees, and I don't want to lose no employees in Work County. I didn't know if the Development Authority could help, or if, or who, you know?
Development Authority make it help, um, and then, you know, I've, uh, maybe I con, I put him in contact with a few bit, uh, uh, vacant buildings that I knew about around, um, that was zoned industrial, but, you know, that's kind of, we have to kind of limit to how much we get involved as far as finding it.
Yeah.
Uh, from staff wise, but Development Authority make him help him.
Well, I just hate to walk him out on a bridge for two years and then cut him off, you know? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gomez had reached out to Development Authority. We don't have any buildings available. Uh, but I did speak to Mr. Gomez, uh, probably about a month ago.
Okay.
He had come looking for an option at the location.
What building y'all in now? Are you, are you in another building now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I, I spoke with him, and he, where he's at, he just can't afford the rent. It's so high, so high. And that's, that's got him in a bind.
Uh, Mr. Gomez is trying, um, he is willing to comply with anything that y'all asked him, um, to do at his property where he's, um, and, um, he did apply for every, all the permits that, you know, through the state. And whenever he went to apply to the county, he was under the understanding that he was getting the right permits to apply. And, uh, he is, on his application, I, I don't know, because I didn't came with him, I didn't help him with it. But, um, in here on this paper, the one that he has the top sales certificate, uh, is dated September twenty-second, September first of twenty-twenty-two, and the business license is dated September, um, it was issued.
Not that that's all.
On, uh, December third, um, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. So he did apply to the state for the right codes and everything. So I, I understand that people do make mistakes, but I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, he, he, he was under the impression that he was, you know, he was doing everything the way he's supposed to, um, do things. Um, so, and all he's asking is, um, an opportunity to continue to work where he was at, and he's willing to comply with everything that y'all request from him.
Anybody else?
And I think he's made the first step, you say getting a building and everybody for the paint, right?
If, if this thing is, if, if, let's say, if it's rezoned for this, can he put a business out there?
If it was rezoned for industrial?
Yeah.
He, he, yeah, he could put his business out there, but he still.
Would he have to put it in a building and be? Because he still can't, uh...
Still can't create a nuisance.
He still can't be spraying around where his neighbors and all, or, I mean, on the outside and all that stuff.
So what the LI, what the LI zoning district says, it says that you can't, um, you can't operate a business that the noise or, uh, air pollution travels further than the property line, something like that, so.
So e, even if you rezoned it, he may still not be able to work there. Excuse me, go ahead. I'm sorry. Even if they, we rezoned it, he still may not be able to work there.
If he can't control the, uh, the noise and the, uh, odor from traveling across the lines.
Okay. Well, that's what I was wondering. I mean, you know, if, if you want to rezonate, then you still ain't going to be able to build a building there, and...
The only way he would have to do it, if he rezoned it, was to move all the operations all the way to the back, away from everything. You might could do something like that, but, but not where they're currently at, because even if you put filters in, I think you'll get, um, uh, stuff going across, coming outside. I mean, you go by, by cabinet shop, and you can smell their stuff, even though it's filtered from a paint booth.
That's what I'm thinking, is there's no need, if, if rezoned, then you still may not even get the permit to, to do that, not in the manufacturer there, even, even if it's rezoned. Is, am I correct on that?
Well, he might, we get the permit, but he might spend a lot of time in magistrate court if he creates a nuisance.
Right.
Um, fighting county ordinance, so, so.
Okay, we want to hear some from the opposed side. If y'all got, can we let them come up? Uh, one of them tall counsel.
Well, well, certainly, it's, it's up to you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think we've given each side the opportunity to speak for and against, which is the purpose of the public hearing. But certainly, if the board has any specific questions or any further information that they want to seek, um, you know, we can, we can do that.
Do y'all want to hear whatever they want to say?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, let's, let's hear from one of them.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just decorum wise, we'll need him to step up to the podium and state his name and address. Thank you.
Tell us who, give us your name and address.
Regan Croft, thirty-five oh seven Nager Drive. Y'all just issuing half the problem. The paint's just half the problem. The noise, the, the boys listening, the kids, the trash, that's all the problem. Let's say you're at your house, and a hundred, a hundred twenty-five feet from your house, you've got grinders, hammers, and all that stuff going on. Would you want it at your house? Stop and think about it. You're in an area that is not zoned or manufactured. All of a sudden, it's put in. I understand you want to try to help a guy, but help the families that's already there. That's all we're asking. We're in an area that is not manufactured. You said move it to the back of the property. I live all the way in Pebble Hill. Every time a truck goes across the bridge, there's a little bump on one of the bridges. You hear it every time some, a car hits it. If you don't believe it, come to the house, and I'll let you hear it. Every night. All we're asking is, put yourself in their shoes. A hundred and twenty-five feet from his bedroom to winter. If you put a matter of fact in there, every time he picks up a grinder, they're going to hear it. And like I said, six and seven times a week, would you want to live by it? That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Listen guys, thank you for listening and, and, and I don't know, maybe you'll be doing something for this guy. I want you to do the right thing. If it's right, then whatever you do. Let's do it in a way like this. We're going to talk on, that everybody be happy and Jesus Christ will be lifted up. That's what we need. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. We'll listen one more.
Yeah, that's what I want to say. Is the noise owners, we all know is a thousand feet by law out there in the county. There's not a thousand feet between myself in the middle of the field and Robbie Hewlett, who's also had problems. Steven Bigpen on the other side, the music, just music alone, the bass carrying, just the music, not including all the other noises. They can hear it there. So, speaking on behalf, behalf of Robert's not here, we done talked, not just the trash, but that's also been a problem, because we both work long hours. He works out of town, as do I. I have eighteen hours, sometimes twenty hour days. Y'all already, you know, on edge, you gotta hear noise, you gotta call somebody, you gotta call two or three times, are they gonna come out, see if they can even hear it. It, it is, I wish him all the best in the world. But I didn't move out there for that. If, if that was the case, he could have had the land a long time ago, if he would have beat me to it over fifteen years ago. I grew up out there. I contained about every neighbor that was there for my age. I remember the small ta, uh, store, Mr. Lewis Stone. I, I, Pebble Hill Grocery. I mean, I go back that far. I mean, for my age. I grew up out, that, that land means a lot more to me because I grew up in the area. It's not a business home for me. And if something happens and where I have to deal with this again, I can't. I have to pick up and leave and that's not easy, because that was my home. I don't know what else to do. I've, I've endured more than most men would. You know, my family get risked and, and had to go back the right way instead of my, my way. I mean, I, I've done everything I was told to do and done it the right way.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we've heard from both sides. Let's carry it over. We'll carry it over to the meeting. We'll vote on. All right. That's all we, uh, I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing.
So moved.
So I think.
I get it, Ken. I didn't know I was gonna log in. I give him the paperwork.
What?
We were promised road work out here on Poncel Lane twenty years ago.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry. We're actually still in the public hearing. You're just a little bit early, but if you'll give us just a few minutes.
We in the public hearing.
Can I pass this on to them, love reader?
If that's fine with the chairman.
Yes, I've got one.
What? Oh, okay, we, we, uh, we gotta get out of this here. I have a motion.
I made a motion.
And a second. You got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. How long we need? Ten minute?
That'd be fine with me.
What, how, how long it take you to get it ready?
The adjourn, the, uh, agenda is ready?
It's ready. You got it ready?
Ten minutes.
Take mi, ten minutes? Come right back.